The call is ready to be ordered. Call roll.
Mayor Querem.
Here.
Councilmember Swanson.
Here.
Mayberry.
Here.
Fabia.
Here.
Newman.
Here. Ladies and gentlemen, join us in the public hearings.
.............................................
I will begin tonight by entertaining a motion to adjourn to a public hearing.
Mayor, I move that we adjourn to a public hearing on the community development block grant.
Second.
Motion's with second. Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye. Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor.
You want to move?
Yes.
Yeah, and just make sure it's on. Oh, we just need your name.
So I didn't switch toward you on the top there.
Aye.
Hello, I'm Kevin Lindeman with the North Central Illinois Council of Governments. I'm here, we're holding a public hearing regarding the city's application for a community development block grant application to the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. This is for the replacement of sewer lines that are cracked and broken. I'll get it in the description here in a moment. It's for the area in sewer lines and the alleys between Main and Pleasant from Putnam Street to Warren, and then between, the alley between Pleasant and First Street from Putnam up to East Clark. The purpose is to eliminate infiltration of cracked and broken sewer pipes and water when it rains. We're getting infiltration back up, that kind of thing, and causing problems for the system and residents. Clay tiles are in poor shape. They did videoing of the tiles, and we've got some great pictures to send in with the application to show how dilapidated the clay tiles are, and they're not even all in round shape. They're kind of turning into a egg shape, and they're going to be, they need to be replaced, and that's why we're applying for the grant. The total cost of the project is estimated at $837,548, and that's for the construction of the project. The city's applying for the maximum amount of $500,000 of community development block grant. City's going to leverage that with additional funds of $337,548 from the sewer fund. This does not include the cost of grant administration or construction engineering, which that totals $84,729. CDBG grants don't require match anymore, but they're not paying for grant administration and construction engineering. They're only paying for, for construction. They're kind of streamlining things a little bit as they... No residents will be displaced as a result of this project, and I believe at the last meeting you passed the anti-displacement relocation assistance plan. At this point, does anybody have any questions about the project?
Anybody in the council, anybody in the audience?
There's a total of $14,388,910 available for distribution from DCO for the December 15th, 2017 grant round. The maximum you can apply for is $500,000. GM1 Associates Consulting Engineers has completed design specifications and plans for the project, and the city's obtained the required IEP permit for this, and that's a new requirement that the state has to make sure that the project's moving forward and ready to go. The funds for benefit to low to moderate income, funds for the Illinois Community Development Block Grant program are granted to the state from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity that distributes the funds around Illinois, except for those communities and counties that get direct entitlement funds from HUB. The funds are dispersed by the state and must meet national goal benefiting at least 51% low to moderate income individuals. The income survey was conducted this fall in September and October for the project benefit area, that was described of where the work's going to happen. We, NCICG, analyzed the results, and they're mapping out the results, and the project benefit area had a low to moderate income benefit of 79.65%. So of the $500,000 of community development block grant funds we're applying for, $398,250 will directly benefit low to moderate income individuals. One of the other things that we have to show is community, or the need financially for the city to need these funds, and so with the help of the engineer and Rachel, came up with a list of capital improvement projects that have been, the city is looking at. It may not be immediate, but coming up down the road showing that the city needs, you know, the grant funds to help do other things in the community, or because you have other needs in the community. So I'm going to kind of read through this list, and if there's anything that you want to add to that, please let me know, we can do that. Storm and sanitary, the wastewater treatment plant, sludge crust of $365,000. Thompson Street Storm and sanitary of $610,000. Sanitary lift stations, three, totaling $450,000. Plan upgrades for phosphorus compliance, $200,000. Industrial park drainage, $125,000. Railroad avenue drainage, $45,000. For water projects, Miles Water and Sewer, $45,000. Streets project, street maintenance of $250,000. The depot on West Long Street ITAC project is about $1.5 million. Sidewalk construction and replacement, $60,000. Uklus Street, $1,300,000. Efferson Road Bridge, $18,000. Buildings, fire station electrical department roof of $172,000. And then there's a list of vehicles, a fire truck for $600,000, an evactor truck for $250,000, an ambulance for $105,000, police cars, five, totaling $40,000, each for a total of $200,000, a bucket truck of $210,000, and a dump truck of $65,000. So all that totals up to about $5.4 million worth of, you know, capital projects that you have, need for in Princeton. Are there any other projects we want to add to that list? I think that's a pretty good list that you've got going there. Application records are on file at North Central Illinois Council of Government's office at 613 West Markepp Street in Ottawa. Office is open Monday through Friday, 8 to 4. Anyone interested in viewing the file or discussing the project further can call NCICG, (815) 433-5830, or visit during office hours. Any other comments? Not, we can cove the public hearing.
I'd like to just ask a quick question, Kevin. So the $500,000s were asked for, they could say, well, we're only giving $250,000 or $300,000, right? I mean, it's not all or nothing?
They don't generally do that. It has happened in the past, but if it does, it would be a small amount. Maybe they do $450,000, because they'd rather fund a complete project than partially, because they've got a, you obligated that you're going to put in the $337,000. Now they're going to come back and ask you, are you willing to put in the other $50,000? So generally, they don't do that. If it does happen, it might be smaller increments, you know, that they might kind of fund another project, so they take a little bit off, but generally, it's pretty much all or nothing.
Okay, I know you said this is coming up on December 15th, the deadline, and do we find out in December then?
Oh, no.
Oh, no.
No, we would like to, we wish we could. It's usually anywhere from four to six months where we find out, and so then there's paperwork process after the grant's awarded, of going through environmental review and that kind of thing, so it probably is likely looking at construction of '19, I would think, with this, you know, maybe we do next, get started with something next fall, but I would suggest more as far as '19.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Or, you can do something.
Uh, date when it would be awarded.
Any other questions? Questions from the audience? I move that we adjourn the public hearing on the community development block grant and return to the regular meeting of our city council.
Second.
Motion's with second. Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye. Now we'll move on to public comment. Jeff, just need for you to state your name. Take your way.
Just take your own? Hi, my name's Jeff Van Autry. I'm here representing Second Story Teen Center. We just wanted to, we've done some different things, we've added some things, we just wanted to bring you guys up to speed. I do have a couple different speakers tonight, I hope that's okay. With that being said, I want to bring up Abby.
I'm Abby Hinderer. I'm 14 years old, and I go to, I'm a freshman at PHS.
She's very nervous.
I love Second Story. When I'm at Second Story, I feel safe and loved. I always look forward to going to Second Story. I enjoy it and appreciate the work the adults do for us, the kids who go there do also do. Second Story makes me feel happy. I'm very lucky to have Second Story. It's like my second home and second family, and I love them so much. I recommend Second Story to all teens.
Kevin?
Um, hello, I'm Gavin McDaniel. I am a junior at Princeton High School, and I want to comment on Second Story, saying how it's just a big weight off of all our parents' shoulders when we go to Second Story. It's more like Abby said, a second home. It benefits us with, if we're not having the adequate funds for food every night at home, or relaxation benefits at home, or anything just to relax and talk to, or have a just entertaining night, it all goes down to Second Story. It's a place where me and my friends can go and not have to be trying to act cool at school, or doing anything that other kids find cool. We can be ourselves, we can be relaxed, we always have a blast. It's just very, very relaxing to be there and to know that we have, we have this great program, and that's around our area. Not many areas have a privilege such as this to mostly just talk to people, be yourself, to just relax, and have people hear you out when you need it most, because a lot of teens, they go through a lot, of course puberty and such, you know, depression and such, and it always helps for us to talk to people like Jeff and Dana. It's a huge weight off our shoulders. It's schools me up there with us and stress, and going there on Tuesdays and Fridays is just, it's a blessing.
My first letter here, Julie Platts, was supposed to come tonight, but she couldn't make it, so she wrote a letter that I'll be reading to you. Second Story Teen Center is so much more than a second level of a building on the north end of Main Street in Princeton. To ask an adult to understand the impact Second Story has had on teens all over Bureau County is nearly an impossible request, as today's teens face many, many different challenges that you or I faced growing up in this wonderful small town of Princeton. As a 20-year-plus educator and now an administrator, I have seen the needs of my students grow from year to year, and his parents, grandparents, and guardians struggle to make these needs while providing food and shelter at the same time. A place like Second Story is a true blessing for all involved. I've known many students that I feared were not fed dinner each night, had no one to turn to when troubled, had nothing to look forward to, and most importantly, felt generally alone with no sense of belonging. Second Story gives them all of these things and more. I have been volunteering at Second Story for a couple of years, and students from my school attend Second Story on a regular basis. I have seen firsthand the transformation it has had on some students. Students that were not in the so-called popular groups or clubs, and seemed reclusive, withdrawn, and all alone in a school setting, became outgoing, more confident, and much more comfortable in their skin at Second Story. I was volunteering one Friday night and saw a particular student that I worry about daily at school. She was out there in the middle of the dance floor, leading a dance video, smiling, laughing, having the time of her life while engaging with all the other teens around her. This is one of the best moments I can remember. There are many activities and events for the teens at Second Story that are centered around building up teens' self-esteem and meeting their social, emotional, and physical needs, not to mention just having, playing fun with their peers in a safe, secure environment. The teens of Bureau County are fortunate that a place like this exists for them, and their parents can rest easy knowing where the teens are on a given Tuesday or Friday night. I strongly support the efforts of Second Story Teen Center to provide a home away from home for these kids, and wish there had been someplace like this in Princeton when I was growing up. Sincerely, Julie Platts, Bureau Valley South, 6th through 8th Administrator. To the members of Princeton City Council, thank you for listening to us tonight. My name is Dana Van Autry, and my ultimate role outside of wife, mom, and grandma is to serve others in our community through our main street flooring business and our non-for-profit teen center. Tonight, that serving comes in the way of the business side of Second Story Teen Center. I would first like to compare some numbers to you. We visited the Bridge Teen Center in Orland Park this past year for the sole purpose of learning how to build a successful teen center. Orland Park's population is 56,000. They opened their doors in 2010 and are secure with private donors, grants, and megachurch donations well over 100,000 yearly. They have three paid positions. We have none. We have implemented many ideas and services because of their mentoring, and hope to create our own footprint of success in Princeton on a lot smaller budget scale. According to Robert Steinman, founder and director of Marketing and Development at the Bridge, there have been modest gifts from the village of Orland Park for over the years, and they did host a fundraiser for three consecutive years, but with the recent mayoral change, the Bridge now manages that event. We are years behind them for experience, yet we are equal in numbers that they serve per night. Weeknights, they average 30 teens, we average 40. Friday nights, they average 85 to 100, depending on the concert, if they hold a concert or not. We average 80 to 90 every Friday night without a concert. We also mentor City Center, a church-based teen center in Kiwanis, that opened its doors this last year. The precedent of a city being involved in its community teen center is not unheard of. It is put into practice outside of Bureau County, and the precedent isn't risky unless there are other teen centers trying to open their doors in the city of Princeton. We are Princeton's standalone teen center. So what are we asking you to consider tonight? One, a rate reduction on a usage increase in water and electric on the two business days that Second Story holds. Two, a line item contribution to be included in the community development section of the general fund for the yearly budget. Second Story represents teens, parents, and volunteers. All of you contribute revenue into the budget by sales tax, income tax, and property taxes. Every one of those contributors support the request of Second Story tonight. Why wouldn't they? We hear daily support and love for Second Story from members of the community. Second Story's been offering the teens, sixth grade through high school, a safe space to connect, to be served with food, fun, and encouragement without religious, educational, or parental boundaries. Rules are followed, respect is given, and yes, most importantly, they are all loved through our own Christian values, because they are met with a listening ear, giving hearts and guidance to help them through the journey of approaching adulthood. Second Story meets the teens where the school's sports and events leave off, and gives them space to be themselves without household demands twice a week. A free space, unlike the Metro Center or other sponsored events. There isn't another place like it, nor any reason behind it, but serving the teen community of Princeton, Illinois. The community of Princeton and Bureau County are our only sources of financial support. It is our duty as a business to identify the needs of the services we offer. We provide an insured, safe, warm, accepting environment with free food. These needs were solidified by a questionnaire each teen was asked to fill out. The need most identified was a safe place and a free meal, twice a week. The food cost alone is $1.50 a teen per night. That cost, based on our average attendance, is over $10,000. It is our responsibility as a business to secure financial support that is constant, not feeling-based. We have several committed donors, but the need is greater than the committed donations. Our community is amazing, and we work together with our table, the pantry, buddy bags, local restaurants, Church Women United, our schools, and the List Girls yearly, to help with our greater needs. Our newest commitment to the teen center has been opening, the opening of Second Story Pantry. It is stocked by donation and only available to the teens of our community. The products offered are food, personal items for girls and boys, school supplies, soaps, shampoos, and household goods necessary for a home of teens. It was more than well-received, therefore we're partnering with Vanessa at the pantry to continue its purpose. This leads me to the emotional side of Second Story and my speech. The teens of Second Story are school band members, pom-pom girls, athletes in the schools. I just learned we have the student of the month with us tonight, with Elena, dance participants, fatherless, motherless, orphaned, neglected, abused, and family. They may be your child's friend, your grandson's best bud, but it happens to the best of them, kid. They are everywhere, and they are here in Princeton, the community you promised to serve so unselfishly, and we thank you for that commitment. I know you take each of it as seriously as we do. Grace, a sad, quiet grade school student, comes smiling into Second Story every week. She lives in a foster home, moved every few months between an abusive mom and safety. She is one of our best pantry recipients because she wants to contribute to the household, willing to foster her. That is important to her. I told her she deserves some joy in her life, and she said she has joy when at Second Story. All of her sadness in the words, in her words, "our normal life" to her, she says. That we are joy to her is heartbreaking yet fulfilling. Logan promises to be with us every possible time we are open. He's a student at PHS who no one has time to take out for the hours of driving his, for his driving permit. His words last week to me were, "The other four members of my household argue constantly, so I stay up in my room alone until I can come here or go to Gavin's." He's moved 14 times in his 15-year life. He's also one of our best eaters. Dominic, a quiet, tough guy with walls all around him, never misses a night. Eats well, calls everyone at Second Story his Second Story family. This is huge, as he has no dad in his life and lives with his mom and sister. To label us family again is a greatest honor we have been bestowed. He is also one of our teen ward members and assists in the pantry when large donations come in. I promise the stories we could share with you will bring a tear to your eye. The daily obstacles these teens overcome are real, and the struggles are tough, which is why the volunteers of Second Story give up time, energy, and money to help bring a little joy to their day. The stories are shared because we are a constant in their weekly lives. We are there weekly because the teens of Princeton need us. Therefore, the community of Princeton needs Second Story. So many people ask us how our city embraces us. We respond by saying, "Our community embraces us." Please let us be able to share how awesome our city management also embraces us, and its teen portion of the community. Thank you.
Dana, Jeff, I would say that, oh, go ahead, Mark will come up.
Mark, who's around, real quick.
That's okay. Mark, we just need you to state your name.
Okay. My name's Mark. Mark Horwath. My wife, Sue, and I own and operate Someone's in the Kitchen in town here. I'm a busy fellow. A year and a half ago, I was encouraged to visit Second Story by a friend who said, "Good things are happening." Good things are happening. Excuse me. For the last year and a half or so, I have been unable to not go there on Tuesday and Friday nights, because of what good things are happening. I don't know what mechanism would be best for the council to use to support this activity, but I encourage you to do that. There are people there that are making a place for kids to come, just because they want to make that place. On Tuesday nights, twice this number of people, of kids, come there just because they want to come there. On Friday nights, three, four times this many people come there because they want to come there. They save a place, they get something to eat. There are adults who have made that place for them, and who care about them, so they have safety, they have affection and respect. So, uh, good thing. I guess I'm not sorry to be emotional. I encourage you to find that mechanism is appropriate for you to use to offer affirmation and endorsement of this good thing, very good thing.
Thank you, Mark. And thank you, the kids have spoken. If, you know, as far as Second Story and what you have done for the community since you've opened, it cannot be overstated how much we appreciate what you do there, the services that you provide. Dana, if we could get a copy of what you read tonight, so we can take this under advisement. I know you've got, moving in there, what you're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Any other comments, council?
I just want to echo that, and I think we need to give them a round of applause for what they're doing.
You are 501, Cooper?
Yes, we are. And I can get a copy of anything you need for that.
Anything more, council? Okay, well, I'm gonna, yeah, you guys, you don't have to stand around, you guys can leave if you want.
Thank you very much.
Please make your time.
You bet. Thank you for coming. Now I'm going to turn this over to Councilmember Newman for the approval of minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from a regular council meeting on Monday, November 6, 2017.
Second.
Motion's with second. Any corrections? Call roll.
Councilmembers Swanson.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye. Now with approval, invoices to City Clerk Nelson.
All right. In the Department of Public Affairs and Department of Accounts and Finances, we have invoices totaling nine, I'm sorry, $494,051.82. In the Department of Streets and Public Improvement, we have invoices totaling $171,847.57. In the Department of Safety, Public Health and Safety, we have invoices totaling $109,633.10. And in the Department of Public Property and Utilities, we have invoices totaling $1,120,684.15. Mayor, all these invoices have been reviewed by all members present and is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve the invoices as presented.
Second.
Motion's with second. Any comments, corrections? Call roll.
Councilmembers Swanson.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye. Now we're going to move into regular business, and we are going to move number 14 on the agenda up to number, up to the first item under regular business. We'll go to City Clerk Nelson.
Okay. Okay, this is a resolution number R-17-045. This is a resolution of support and commitment of local funds for a community development block grant. Mayor, this has been reviewed by all council members and is submitted for disposition.
I move that we accept resolution R-17-045.
Second.
Motion's with second. Comments?
I'll just make a quick comment about this resolution. This is part of the CDBG grant application that Kevin talked about earlier tonight for the sanitary sewer replacement. Similar to the resolution we approved last meeting with the ITAC, the commitment of funds for the full project costs that exceed the grant amount. So that is what this is. Anyone have any questions?
Need for the comments? Call roll.
Okay, councilmembers Swanson.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
All right, next we have ordinance number...
All right, next we have ordinance number O-17-023. This is an ordinance levying taxes for corporate purposes for the fiscal year commencing on the first day of May 2018 and ending on the thirtieth day of April 2019 for the city of Princeton Bureau County, Illinois. Mayor, this ordinance has been reviewed by all members present and is submitted for disposition as first reading.
I move that we pass, or I'm sorry, that we approve ordinance O-17-023 and move into the next reading.
Second.
Motion's been second. I want to turn this over to Rachel.
So I'll just make a few comments, and then I think Paula from the library, the president of the library board will come up and speak about their levy, since the city's and the library's levy are one levy combined. So these are for our proposed tax since the beginning of fiscal year May 1st, 2018. The tax levy has to be presented and posted for discussion twenty days before final approval, so we won't actually approve the final levy ordinance until the December 18th meeting. Overall, the city's levy, the city's portion of the levy is staying pretty consistent with the prior years. We've continued to maintain that tax rate of under $1. The current rate for the city's portion is .91. The largest portion of our levy, as most of you know, goes to the police and fire pension funds. Every year, the state Department of Insurance completes an actuarial valuation report that basically says what you should levy, and we try to be very diligent on making sure we levy as much as those say. Currently, our pensions are funded at 71% for the fire and 78% for the police. There is a state mandate to get those 100% funded by, I believe it's 2040, seems far away, but it's sooner than we think. So this year, we're levying $319,800 for the police pension. The proposed levy, I should say, $285,500 for the fire pension. Both of those two line items make up more than half of the total levy, so I just pointed those out specifically. But overall, the city's portion of the tax bill, so of an average resident tax bill, the city's portion of that bill is about 9.9% of that. This year's 2017 EAV increased by a little bit, over 2.5%, and the city's overall increase in the proposed tax levy is about 2.9%. So it'll basically keep an average tax bill the same or show a small increase of around $5, depending on that EAV for that property. So both the city and the proposed library's levies stay under the 5% truth in taxation limit, so we don't have any extra hearing requirements for that. So that's all I have about the city's portion. Paul, if you want to speak about the library?
No, that's $5 a year. Five dollars a year. Paul, just your name?
My name is Paul Ernst. I'm the president of Princeton Public Library, and I also serve on the Building and Grounds Committee. The state has recently given libraries the opportunity to add a tax assessment of .02% for the purposes of long-term maintenance of library buildings and facilities. We are seeking only a portion of the state's allowable .02 percentage. We believe it prudent to seek a percentage of .01289 of this assessment to put aside for long-term maintenance and repair of existing building issues. Now, you're going to say, "What building issues? You just have a new building." No, the building has been around for ten years. And we need to take a look at some large, big-ticket items. Julie and I spent some time with four different companies, and all of these estimates, with the exception of the last one from Getz Fire Department, Getz Fire Equipment Company are basically within the last few days. Number one is the HVAC system on the roof. We have six units, and they need to be replaced in the next five to six years due to issues with the legality of the refrigerant. There also, they have unattached duct work. They weren't connected properly when they were installed, and that results in 30% less efficient heating and cooling. That estimate was arrived, was given to us by ESCO, the company that does our maintenance on those machines. They've given us an estimate for replacing one 10-ton unit at $11,000, and the duct work for three units can be done for $3,000. Next item on our big-ticket list is the roof. The lifespan is 20 to 30 years, which we hope we can get out of it. It will take at least $1,000 a year in maintenance costs. And the estimate for a new roof, if we do the maintenance, and that was done by, this estimate was given to us by Sterling Roofing, who did the original roof for us, was $330,000, and that's with good maintenance of the roof between now and 2035. The third item, the parking lot, which doesn't have necessarily any major problems right now. If it's properly installed, we can get 20 years on that parking lot and the asphalt. But according to Advanced Asphalt, a new parking lot with an aggregate base, asphalt binder, and asphalt surface would be a layout of about $125,000. And last but not least is the history room at the library. Getz Fire Equipment Company came in and gave us a bid on a fire suppression system so that none of the materials in that room would be harmed by fire. And it's a good system, but we don't have a real ceiling in any of the library. It's all suspended. And so that would have to be sealed first so the suppression system would work. And that is between $21,000 and $32,000. So those are some of the issues that we're looking at long-term.
So this levy is more of a permanency, permanent levy?
No, something that would have to be, we return to you and ask for, again, on a yearly basis.
And how much of your revenue, say, for the last 10 years, have you set aside to start a building maintenance fund?
We've been running, basically, like everyone else. We take care of salaries, books, and things that come up in the library. We do some construction with it. We do concrete repair. We do any issues that prop up inside the building, but none has been necessarily set aside.
Melissa, have you though, have allocated $20,000 down every year for ongoing maintenance of that facility, if I recall? Which tells me that you're doing all you can, right, to keep what you have working properly?
Yes, that's true. The largest bill I think we've had in the past year has been for concrete, and that was because the concrete was subsiding on the front curb, creating tripping hazard for patrons.
Well, would this be the beginning of a three-year plan or a five-year plan to kind of get your arms around projects that are needed for the library?
I certainly hope so.
No, Joel, I ask you about whether this is a permanent or a temporary levy. I mean, if the levy is approved, it will be an ongoing levy and will always be there unless you were to say that after a three- or five-year period of time, you've accumulated enough funds and maybe this levy could be reduced or eliminated. Are you saying that may happen or may not happen?
That could happen, yes.
Yeah, that was my point. You wanted it to be a permanent fixture of levy, building, building maintenance. You levy taxes every year. Next year, this levy is 17 for 17.5. So next year, it could be, it could be lower, it could be higher, it could be staying.
Right. But we would still have to come back and talk to you about it.
And would you consider, if this levy goes through, would you consider going through your budget, seeing where cuts can be made, and starting a fund on top of it? Or are you just relying on the levy?
Well, I think we have, Carolyn?
Oh, well, if I could say currently, we have reduced expenditures each year since Julie's been here. We've had really good success doing that, but more importantly, my point is, we do go into our reserves every year. So, just to maintain, because we do take care of capital maintenance as it is now, since we have never levied for that. And so ultimately, we've been going into reserves in order to take care of cleaning and repair work and in capital expenses. So I'm not sure that there's a lot of room. They work on it each month and each month. Paul had those figures, what color expenditures have been going down month by month, but we work real hard.
Do you know what your balance is in reserves?
I don't right now, but I think it's around, in reserves, $200,000.
We did just get a per Patrick request. It's just short of $200,000, but the principal is protected and you can only use the interest.
What request? What kind of request? A request?
A case, request.
Bequest. It's a per Patrick.
Bequest, yeah.
And it's great. It's a large amount of money, but we can't touch that amount. We can only touch the interest.
What is your annual operation cost?
$325,000 or something like that?
Yeah, I have the information for our maintenance. Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't bring our statements. Jerry had those at the last meeting. Do you have those on?
I don't have them.
Yeah, I didn't know we were gonna be talking about that.
But Paul is close in the 300,000 to 400,000 on our annual budget.
I would like to just ask a quick question. So Mayor, when you mentioned that the tax levy for the police and fire, and I realize that's more involved on our end than just those two entities for pensions, but this would be $5 for the average tax bill. Now, that's based on what price home, though? What's an average tax bill in Princeton? I'd like to get a sheet on that.
So when we did that comparison, it was average based on Zulily. The average price home, which was about $120,000, but we just took an average, what the average home sold for in Princeton, that it was $120,000.
Okay, so on our end, we got a $120,000 home, the average tax bill then is gonna go $5. What's it gonna be for the library?
Sorry, can I just make a correction real quick? That's not completely to depend on the EAV, because with the, there was also a 2.5% increase in the 2017 EAV, and ours was gonna increase, our tax levy increased by 2.9, so some of that might wash that out, too.
Okay, so let's go to the library. What would it be then on an average home tax bill approximately?
And I have that, too, if you don't have that.
$4.
Fine, we have that.
I think it was $470,000.
$450,000 or something.
And you're using the same approximate $120,000 value homes?
I think we could reiterate that, Tom, so it's $109,000, but I would say that's comparable.
I did the same comparison for the library. It was about $470,000, so they used, you know, the left was $450,000, so what about that?
Okay, thank you. Just wanna get a sense of what we're going down.
Okay, we're talking on it every year, so it's $470 per year.
How many years would this be in effect? I mean, forever is, if it passes, or?
Well, we submit our levy each year to you, so it would be hard to say. Maybe we'll receive a huge bequest, you know, directed towards capital, you know, you don't know. I would say the most sure thing we know about our levy is that the bonds will drop off in 2025. So those are gonna drop off in seven years. So that's the most sure thing we can say, and that'll reduce the taxes.
You know, I appreciate the fact that we have a councilperson that attends those meetings, and I don't know, has there been a councilperson in the past that attended your meetings?
No.
So we appreciate that we have a councilperson going there every month to your meetings, and we'll get more dialogue back from that, from Jerry, as to how things are progressing. I know that when people come to Princeton to possibly relocate, we have a little tour we take, depending on the age of the person, but most of the time, we go to the metro center, we drive by the hospital, and we also go to the library, and people moving into Princeton really are impressed with our library. So it's a quality of life thing that we enjoy, as well as people that look at possibly moving to Princeton. So I'm in favor of this, and I appreciate Laura's comments that, you know, you have to start looking at screwing your money away for, and we, you know, we don't hear much from you, and it's our fault. I could be coming to those board meetings and also to the public. I apologize. I've never been to one. I do have my library card, and I use the library services quite a bit, but I appreciate, again, that we have Jerry attending and giving us more feedback. So I'm in favor of this, and I'm the last guy that want to raise taxes, 'cause, although, I just, once you throw that on there, my opinion is not gonna come back off, but I think it's going to a good cause. So the point would be, as I'm supportive of this tonight.
I'd like to make a couple of comments if I can, Paul. I think that we're, I'm so glad that I've been able to attend your meetings, and I think maybe for the first time in a long time, the city's getting their arms around the library and to kind of understand more fully is what your needs are and what issues you face and your budgets and all the other things associated with it. I'd like to make some recommendations, though. I would like to recommend that Rachel and Julie meet any on a monthly basis. I mean, Rachel, we took her department heads every month. I think it would be helpful for Julie and Rachel to converse back and forth and stay up to date on each other's issues, and maybe there's some information that Rachel has. She's an expert budget person and along the lines of meeting every month. I would also like Rachel to be very much involved with the funding, budget planning, and just to be able to review and take a look at and offer some advice. Again, her experience and expertise is invaluable. I think we should take advantage of her.
I think we welcome her input.
Right. And I think, and finally, we, and we do this with the hospital, is every year, the hospital comes before the council to give us a snapshot of their budget that's gonna begin, you know, within a week or a month, so maybe right before the fiscal year begins. They come in and they give us a presentation on the budget, how it looks, and what your plans are and what you're hoping to accomplish in 2018 and 19. I think that would be a wonderful addition to our agenda, and I would like you guys to start doing that.
Okay.
Do you, can I ask a question? When we give our budget to you, do you guys look it over to see if you have any questions for us? Because you do get it every year.
So in the past, we haven't formally approved it, but I think that might be what Jerry's saying, is we'll put it on the agenda so that we can see that. You know, typically, I think we meet during tax levy time, and it's really about it, so maybe just keeping those lines of communication.
And that's where I think the more frequent dialogue back and forth is gonna help make that happen a little bit easier, a little bit smoother. And, I mean, to me, there's a lot that I've learned just in the last three meetings that I've gone to with you guys, and it's great, and it is a fabulous asset, and we just don't want to see anything but good things happen at the library.
Thank you.
That's one thing that we've been trying to do, you know, with our various commissions and committees around town, is having council involvement, and Jerry attends his fair share of a lot of different committees. So I appreciate everything that Jerry's done in keeping us informed to listen on.
Well, I say, I will say that Jerry also attends the Lovejoy Board meetings during the summer when they're held. I don't think they're held this season, but the house is pretty cold at this point. So, I see Jerry a couple times, so.
And he's at the hospital, too. Hospital, so attend all the hospital. And again, glad to do it. I think it's valuable, it's worthwhile. And the fact that I can facilitate back and forth and help out along the way is just an added bonus for me, so.
Okay.
I'm wondering if this levy, if this ordinance is ready to be passed on tonight, or if maybe there might, maybe we should table this and bring it up in the next meeting and make sure we've got our arms around exactly what this tax levy's gonna look like. So this is a first reading. I'm wondering if we, you know, we, I made a motion to pass it. Do we want to pass it, and then, or do we want to table? I'm wondering if we have enough information, or advance it to the second reading as is? You can, you can make a motion to table it first and see if that passes, correct, John? And if it doesn't, then we go back. I would like to make a motion that we table the passing of the levy to the second reading until we have more information on exactly what the final numbers are gonna be, and we can take a second look at it in two weeks, and then finalize it two weeks after that. Motion's been second. Call roll.
Councilmembers Swanson?
Aye.
Avery?
Aye.
Fabia?
Aye.
Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querum?
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Carolyn, for coming to me. You guys can go if you want. Or you can stay and, you know.
Okay, next item on the agenda is, next item on the agenda is Resolution R-17-042. This is a resolution authorizing an amendment to the motorfield tax expenditures. This has been reviewed by all members present and is submitted for disposition.
I move that we pass Resolution R-17-042, authorizing the motorfield tax expenditures.
I move that we pass Resolution R-17-042, authorizing the motor fuel tax expenditures, an amendment to that expenditure, sorry.
Second.
Motion's been second. Rachel?
I'm going to talk about this resolution and the following one together, just because they go hand in hand. So recently, we've been in discussions with IDOT regarding our MFT obligated versus unobligated balance and our cash balance. We had some discrepancies. And it was in regards to the Euclid Street project, the preliminary engineering agreement with Barnesworth for the Euclid Street project. There were a couple invoices. So IDOT had approved the, sorry, this gets complicated, approved the agreement with Barnesworth. But every time they invoice, you have to get IDOT's approval to pay that invoice. There were two invoices in 2015 that were not approved by IDOT, but were paid out of the MFT, making their obligated versus unobligated balance different than ours. So we're on the same page now, but we had to do some things to correct that, because when IDOT approved our MFT numbers for this year, they had the wrong balance shown, and so they approved more than they should have. So the first resolution that you have tonight is adjusting that MFT contract with Barnesworth. We've paid them everything we need to pay them. The final dollar amount's on there, and that kind of closes up that project. And then the second resolution is adjusting this year's MFT program, which is also already complete, but it's just reducing it by $100,000. And we're going to pay for that, that reduction out of the general fund. Any questions, let me know.
Comments? Call roll.
Council members Swanson?
Aye.
Mabry?
Aye.
Fabia?
Aye.
Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querom?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is Resolution R-17-043, authorizing an amendment to the motor fuel tax cost estimate. Mayor, this has been reviewed by all members present and is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve Resolution R-17-043, authorizing an amendment to the motor fuel tax cost estimate.
Second.
Motion's been second. Comments? Call roll.
Council members Swanson?
Aye.
Mabry?
Aye.
Fabia?
Aye.
Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querom?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is Resolution R-17-040. This is a resolution authorizing a financial services agreement between the City of Princeton, Illinois, and Lauterbach and Amen LLP to perform financial and accounting services. Mayor, this has been reviewed by all members present and is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve Resolution R-17-040, which is authorizing a financial services agreement between the City of Princeton and Lauterbach and Amen LLP to perform financial and accounting services.
Second.
Motion's been second. Rachel?
So this is an agreement with Lauterbach and Amen. They are strictly a local government outsourcing and audit firm. They're located in Naperville. They have about 150 employees that are all CPAs on their staff. Recently, we've had some difficulties filling and keeping the Director of Finance position, so we looked at outsourcing it. Schreeter also uses them for their outsourcing. We've met with them on multiple occasions. They actually helped us complete all of our year-end reporting already. They helped us finish up the audit, submit the Department of Insurance reports for the police and fire pensions, and they completed the treasures report. And then this would be a monthly contract with them to basically fulfill those treasure and financial duties. They'd be doing, as it says in here, I'm actually going to read through it. So, okay, Department of Insurance report, there you've got that. Treasures report, tax levy, audit preparation and support, budget preparation, support and review, ongoing support for the city's medical insurance plan, internal controls, including payroll review, bank reconciliations, monthly financial reporting, debt summary and forecast. So those are just some of the things. They'll be doing their fixed fee for this current contract is $5,000 per month. However, we'll look at that annually. The first year, they're going to be doing a lot more than they will probably in the second year, so we'll review that. However, this will be a cost savings compared to a full-time employee with benefits. It'd be about a $15,000 to $20,000 cost savings.
Comments? And we're going to get every service that we need to operate the city using this firm.
Yeah, I've been very happy so far with them. They also provide utility billing, backup and payroll backup. So if we ever had someone that was on vacation, since our staff is so limited, they could jump in and fulfill those duties.
And the way our accounting system is set up and organized, that they talk seamlessly between the two.
Yeah, so they actually have other clients that use the benefits, though. So that's good for us.
Yes. Motion's been second. Any other comments? Call roll.
Council members Swanson?
Aye.
Mabry?
Aye.
Fabia?
Aye.
Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querom?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is Resolution R-17-044. This is a resolution authorizing a services agreement between the City of Princeton and GovHR USA to perform recruitment for a police chief. Mayor, this has been reviewed by all members present and is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve Resolution R-17-044, which is authorizing a service agreement between the City of Princeton and the GovHR USA to perform recruitment for a new police chief.
Second.
Motion's been second. Rachel?
So this, as I've mentioned, is for a third party to perform the recruitment for our new police chief, with Chief Brett retiring at the end of December. We would look at doing a limited scope agreement, which is put in here at $14,000. However, that does not include if we have to pay for anyone to travel for the interviews. So it's not to exceed total of $15,000 for this agreement, just in case there's any travel and accommodations needed for the candidates when they come in to be interviewed. So this company will publish the ad, do all the required postings on all the different websites, and they'll accept all the applications, do the kind of the first round preliminary interviews and assessments, and then put together their recommendations for three to five candidates. And then the council and other community stakeholders will interview those last candidates and make the final decision.
The motion has been seconded. Any further comments? And Rachel, references from these guys are just at the top of their game?
Yeah, so they're actually doing three other police chief recruitments right now. I also looked at a couple other firms that do this, including the Illinois Chief Police Association, but I was most impressed with them, and their fee was most reasonable.
And if someone from in-house would like this position, should they go through this service or?
Yeah, the same as everyone else.
Rachel, anything? The only question I had was, did you actually talk to anyone that has used them, just, and they were very comfortable?
Yes, very comfortable. Yeah, I've talked to a couple that have used them. They're currently doing, I'm going to get the name wrong right now, Highland Park?
Highland Park.
Highland Park, yeah. And I know their village manager there, so they're happy with that process so far. I wanted to say Hanover Park, but it's Highland Park. But I forgot, that's all.
Any further comment? Call roll.
Council members Swanson?
Aye.
Mabry?
Aye.
Fabia?
Aye.
Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querom?
Aye. Thank you, City Clerk Nelson, and I'll go to City Manager Report.
Okay, so I just have two things. I attached the fiscal year 2017 audit in your packets. The auditors will be, they couldn't make tonight's meeting, they had a prayer commitment, but they will be at our next meeting, and I'll kind of discuss this and go over, answer any questions. The only thing, when I look at the audit, I'll point out pages eight, nine, 10, and 11 kind of give a snapshot of where we ended the year. If you look at, on page 11, it talks about net position beginning of year, net position end of year. Our governmental activities fund was down, business type activities fund was up. Overall, it was, we're about one, a million dollars over net assets this year than the end of year last year, but that's largely because of those business type activities, which are water, sewer, electric funds. General fund, governmental activity funds, you know, we're still seeing some struggles there that we'll have to look into the future and forecast in those funds. But that's kind of, when I look at a snapshot of our audit, those are the features I turn to. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. And a general comment from them is that we're on track and we're doing all the right things.
Well, we're making improvements, but still, you know, with the debt women and given some other financial concerns, especially with decreasing revenue and some of the general funds, you know, there's definitely some struggles. And seeing that general funds, or governmental funds, I should say, the net position there changed, you know, we'll have to make a plan for that. And then the only other thing I have is the treasures report. This was completed with the help of Water, Rock and Amen. That kind of gives what I basically just talked about with the audit, the general overview. It gives our revenue collected, and then there's a list of all vendors that have been paid in excess of $2,500. And then the compensation summary is at the bottom. This has been sent to the VCR and will be published in their paper.
Any comments? Thank you, Rachel. I've just got a couple items. First of all, I entertain a motion to force some appointments to the Princeton Public Library Board of Trustees.
Yes, Mayor, I have moved that we appoint following people to the Library Board Trustees: Lanny Swinsford for a term ending June 30th, 2020, Mike Patassio for a term ending June 30th, 2020, and Jennifer Alter for a term ending June 30th of 2020.
Second.
Motion's been second. Comments? Call roll.
Council members Swanson?
Aye.
Mabry?
Aye.
Fabia?
Aye.
Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querom?
Aye.
I have a proclamation for this Saturday. It's Small Business Saturday. The City of Princeton, Illinois celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 23 million small businesses in the United States. They represent more than 99% of American employer firms, create more than 2/3 of the net new jobs, and generate 46% of private gross domestic product. Small businesses employ over 55% of the working population in the United States. 93% of consumers in the United States agree that it's important for people to support the small businesses that they value in their community. And the City of Princeton supports our local businesses to create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. Therefore, I, Joel Querom, Mayor of Princeton, Illinois, do hereby proclaim November 25th, 2017, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and the merchants of Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. One more. I've got City Hall. I've got some public notice regarding the closing. City Hall will be closed on Thursday, November 23rd, and Friday, November 24th, in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. The Thursday garbage and recycling collection routes will be picked up on Monday, November 27. The Friday garbage and recycling collection routes will be picked up on Tuesday, November 28. Please have garbage and recycling, recycling out by 5:00 a.m. Questions can be directed to City Hall at 875-2631 and press option two. Thank you. Old business?
I've got one, if I can, Mayor. About a month ago, we had sent out letters to building owners that had signs on their buildings for businesses that had closed. And we were requesting that these signs be removed for the ordinance that we have in place. Eight have removed signs, nine still have not. I'm going to ask our clerk to send a second letter out to these nine individuals and give them a limited amount of time to comply, and maybe impose a fine if it's appropriate. That's all I have.
The other old business. New business?
Very good, Mayor, just for a second. The Christmas, I know the Christmas open houses this past weekend. And Laura, I want to thank you for driving the trolley. I saw you up there. I think that's a great asset, that trolley. Again, I like that rascal moving up down the street with people on it and smiling. Also, the city employees did a nice job decorating the town. It looks really great. So I just want to compliment the city employees out there. There's a lot of different departments that work on that whole process.
They put colored lights on the trees on South Main Street. That actually makes the lights on top of the buildings look better. I think downtown looks great. Any other new business? Public comment? Entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting and go to our next.
I move that we adjourn our regular meeting, and then we convene our next regular meeting at City Hall on Monday, December 4th at 7:00.
Second.
Motion's been second. Call roll.
Council members Swanson?
Aye.
Mabry?
Aye.
Fabia?
Aye.
Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querom?